I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the January 7th, 2025 meeting of the Goffstown zoning board adjustment. The Goffstown zoning board is an elected board of five members and up to five alternates appointed by the zoning board. The board currently has, due to a last-minute resignation today, four members and one alternate. If anyone is interested in becoming a member of the board, please contact the Planning and Zoning Office at Town Hall for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and intends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abudders, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny or continue to another date or later meeting. You're welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can call the zoning department at Town Hall in the morning to get the results of the meeting. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court or to the New Hampshire Housing Appeals Board. However, before appealing, you must request a rehearing with the board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was unlawful or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal. I'll ask the board members to introduce themselves now, starting at that end with Jack.
Jack Shepard, Building Inspector, Code Enforcement and Zoning.
John Bellevue, Member.
Denise Langley, Vice Chair.
Leonard Stewart, Chairman.
Jason Cody, Member.
Bruce Patrick, Alternate.
All right, moving into our agenda for this evening.
I'd just like to make a motion. Due to not having a full member board, I'd like to just nominate Bruce to be a voting member through the whole meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Bruce is an alternate. He'll now be voting on all matters tonight because we're short one of the regular members of the board who resigned today. Moving into tonight's business, the minutes. Let us talk about the minutes of the December 3rd, 2024 meeting. Anyone have any corrections, amendments, anything to offer on those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion to approve the minutes, as is.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Okay, the first public hearing continued from the December 3rd, 2024 meeting. On November 12th, 2024, the zoning board of adjustment voted to grant a rehearing for the following application that was previously denied on October 21st, 2024. Cynthia Bovier of Arago Land Consultants LLC, applicant, and Arlene Upton, owner, are seeking variances to subdivide a lot into two lots. The first variance is required because one of the proposed lots will not meet 200 feet of continuous lot frontage, whereas 200 feet is required per Section 4.2.1 and 4.3 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance. The second variance is required because one of the proposed lots will have a width less than 200 feet as required by Section 4.2.3 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance. The proposal is to create a second lot that will have only 160.67 feet of continuous frontage on Tibbetts Hill Road and 31.11 feet of continuous frontage on Snow Road. The driveway access is proposed to come off the 31.11 feet frontage along Snow Road that will not meet 200-foot width requirement. The property is located at Snow Road and 488 Tibbetts Hill Road, MAP 11, Lot 11, Zone Agricultural. Before we take up the matter tonight, I need to point out to the applicants, we have a situation where we are short one member of the board. We have one of our sitting members who has to recuse because of a relationship with an abutter, so it will only be four members of the board eligible to vote on tonight's matter. The applicant has the option, if there is not a full board, to request a continuance until there is a full board to hear the matter. So I'd like to find out what the applicant's decision on that score is at this point.
We'd like to proceed tonight.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving into the hearing itself. If you want to come up, Ms. Bovier, and make your presentation.
I'll move for no regional impact.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
Welcome, sir.
I just have to turn off my phone. I'm sorry.
Yes, I should add that to the front-end instructions. Please silence your cellphones.
Sorry about that. Cynthia Bovier from Arago Land Consultants. I did make, I assume everybody has copies of the original application, the appeal, and I have a couple of 11-by-17s I'd like to hand out as well. I did something that you didn't.
Oh, good.
Because we were, with some of the past suggestions.
Oh, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I think there might have been one of these in me, but I just really wanted to. Thank you so much. There's two sheets in me. So, sorry. One thing I'd like to explain is our original, the way, when we put the application in, in the way it was posted and everything, our original application, we are not requesting a variance for a subdivision. The original application to the town stated that it's in, the applicant is requesting variance from Section 4.2 Additional Standards, 4.2.1 Minimum Lot Frontage, and 4.2.3 Lot Width to allow the applicant two new lots where a minimum of 200 feet for frontage is required. I think because of all the information that we had when staff typed up the notice that it says that we were requesting variances to subdivide a lot, we are not requesting that. The two lots that they're proposing meet all zoning requirements. So I just wanted to point that out, that what we're asking for was the frontage. Okay. So it's, it's an existing 5.36-acre parcel with 360.67 feet on Tibbetts Hill Road. There is an additional 30.11 feet on Snow Road. That is not part of this variance. It's just informational for that the lot has frontage on Snow Road as well. So as stated, we're requesting the, we're requesting variances for the minimum lot frontage and minimum lot width. And the lot width is at the front setback. So since we're asking for the new lot to have less frontage, then the setback is also going to be less than the minimum 200 feet. So the first item for consideration.
John, I think you need to recuse yourself on this one.
I thought I already did.
You need to leave the table. I'm sorry. I was so, in listening to you, I forgot to. You just recused yourself. You can sit out there.
Oh, I have to, okay.
You just need to leave the table. It's just been our practice.
We are so, we are so nice to our members.
Get out.
Sorry, John. You can stay in the room.
We're not chasing you out of the room, John. You just need to leave the table. Thank you.
You need to come back after. I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine and nice. Everybody does recusals different. So the first item is it must, it must not be contrary to public interest. So we originally, our feeling was variance for frontage and width will not be contrary to public interest as the requested variance will not be in conflict with the basic purposes of the relevant zoning provisions as they will neither alter the character of the area nor threaten public health, safety, or welfare. I have the handout from the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And the New Hampshire Supreme Court has held that to be contrary to the public interest or injurious of public rights, the variance must unduly, in a market degree, conflict with the basic zoning objectives of the ordinance. So the board should examine whether the variance would alter the essential character of the locality or threaten public health, safety, and welfare. So in this case, again, the plans that I gave you, I have the Town GIS, and one has, you know, all the lots, and I put it with topo and with vegetation. But the second sheet that you received shows all the abutting land with all the abutting homes and where those homes sit, really in relationship to where the developable portion of this five acres would be. So the, the back lot, as we're suggesting, would be over three acres, and the existing farmhouse would meet all zoning regulations, and it would be two and a half acres. The budding, there's two, there's a lot that's 1.5 acres in a budding lot. There's one lot that's 1.7 acres. And then there is, there are three lots at three acres, and there's one at two and a half acres. So therefore, our feeling is that the two lots are very much in keeping with the existing lots in this area. So it would, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest as it pretty much matches what is already in existence in this neighborhood. The second item is the, it must be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. And again, variances for frontage and width will be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance as the A Agricultural District is intended to support a single-family neighborhood where the minimum lot size is two acres. Again, the New Hampshire Municipal Association, it's the same criteria as number one that I read, that would the variance alter the essential character of the locality or threaten public health, safety, or welfare. And these, the, the frontage and the width variances will not affect the spirit of the ordinance, and that's what we're looking at. The, and with regards to the spirit of the ordinance, when we were denied the first time, I just wanted to bring it up, was we were denied because it was, the board voted on the fact that the point of the variance, quote, "is to create a sufficient use in buffering that is not present." That does not qualify for a variance. I'm not, I, I do not know what create a sufficient use in buffering means. There is no, there's no words in the New Hampshire zoning ordinance stating sufficient use. And when we talk use, we're saying it's going to be a single-family residential home. So that would be the use. We would meet that in the existing, the lot sizes would be the same. And the only buffering that is mentioned in our ordinance is the, you know, buffering with regards to residential against commercial or industrial or something. So the reasons for that denial initially was unreasonable and an error of law that we're, for zoning, we're, we're very, it's very specific that it's, is, are we asking for variances that meet Goffstown's essential character of the thing, not of the whole zoning ordinance. So the third item is substantial justice would be done. Substantial justice will be done in granting these variances as the lot has sufficient area to be subdivided into larger than minimum lot sizes, allowing the owner of the, of the property to remain in her home for 78 years. The only thing lacking of this parcel is the frontage. So we're, the farmhouse would keep the 200 feet of frontage, and the remaining frontage would go to the larger lot in the rear. The values of the surrounding properties, number four, it would not diminish, diminish the value of the surrounding properties. The surrounding properties will not be diminished by having another house in a neighborhood that already has all single-family homes on lots from 1.5 acres up to three acres. And these two lots are going to be two acres and three and a half acres. And when they, when we're talking about the, the properties are diminished, they, the purpose of the zoning is that there are already, every, every abutter is already single-family homes, and one more single-family home is not going to diminish the, the purpose of the Goffstown zoning ordinance, nor will that home diminish the value of the other homes going in. I, I didn't go so far as to find out the history of, there's two lots that are less than two acres out there. Regardless, they're pre-existing lots, and they're, it's a great neighborhood, and from the topo and with the vegetation, the plan that I gave you, where they want, where we're suggesting which would be the most developable area is, well, it's, it's very far from any of the proposed homes. So a lot of, a lot of the things that I'm talking about are based on the things that were mentioned at the first hearing when we were denied. So the, so I'm not going to go into all the reasons that the abutters stated that their properties would be diminished in value, but they would not be diminished in value. There, there's more than enough room in that three acres for Goffstown building blocks, Septic State, Septic Square, as well as the well radius that are well away, where, away from any property lines. Number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in hardship, and owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and variance are therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. And this is where we have a lot that has 360.67 feet of frontage and more than enough acreage for two lots, meeting town and state requirements, that they would need the variance for one of those lots to have less than minimum frontage and minimum width. They will meet, the lots will meet all other front, rear, side setbacks. So the, there won't, there would, there is a hardship because it's inherent in the land. It's the land that is the hardship. It's not, you know, any other reason, but that's, that's the whole purpose of number five, is it's inherent in the land, so we have that. So therefore, we're, it's, you know, we're here again because we feel that our first denial was an error of law and was unreasonable, given the circumstances and evidence presented that really are not pertinent to the purpose of variance for frontage and width.
Sorry, I'd just like to add one point to that. There actually wasn't a previous denial. This is a rehearing, so this is from step one.
Because we took it back.
We took it back, so there was no.
Rehearing, it basically is a new proceeding as far as this board is concerned.
Okay. So if we got denied, I could still appeal here again.
I would think so.
Jack? Okay. All right. I was just, you know, you knew where I was.
As you explained to me, it was like, the last one never happened.
Right.
The first one never happened. Okay. All right. Well, I was covering all my bases.
No, it doesn't hurt to do.
Okay, do you guys have any questions?
Board members?
I don't think so.
Cynthia, the driveway, the proposed driveway, is that meeting all setbacks, or are you going for a variance for that as well?
No. So we're not asked, driveways are not the purview of the zoning board. That will be answered if we get the frontage variance. That's the planning board's thing. We, we did that. I showed you where a driveway, the best place for the driveway would be coming from Snow Road. That's the planning board's decision. That's the best way to get up to that lot.
But the planning board can't give somebody permission to infringe on the zoning. That's our responsibility.
A driveway, a driveway coming in wouldn't, the driveway isn't part of zoning. The driveway...
Driveways don't need to be, need setbacks?
They do, but that's the planning board and the public works.
I would.
As far as setbacks go.
As far as setbacks go.
But, but I would, I would say that knowing that a driveway has to be placed there because of this is part of the zoning process, because I don't care about the setbacks, per se. I care about the total idea. The idea is that you're also going to need a driveway. If that's where it's going to go, okay, but that's something that's been introduced that we can take into account for how it's going to be used.
The, I, I, I disagree with that because the, if you look at the, if you look at the plan, if we, if we use, put the driveway in from the remaining frontage, you're going through the wetland buffers, and, and that's, that's more of a disturbance to, and we could do it. So we don't have to go from Snow Road, but it isn't, the driveway is not part of zoning. And we met with, we had a TRC meeting before we even came the first time with engineering, planning, zoning, I think SURE, I forget who else was there. In discussing the layout of this lot, and it was decided at that meeting that the, that Snow Road access for feasibility would be the best place, but also, that's the planning board's decision, okay? So, and the engineer for the DPW concurred that safety-wise and length and not disturbing the wetland buffer would, would do that. However, we are more than willing to, to come up from Tibbetts Hill Road, but it would be going through the buffer, which isn't your call.
It seems to me, however, what we're being asked to do here as a ZBA is essentially to create what we call a flag lot, because if you're doing it the way you're proposing with no access from the Tibbetts Hill side, your only way is you've got a long, skinny flag that goes up to the buildable portion of it, and the back property on that lot is essentially, is essentially unusable. So, you know, the, the real question, I had, flag lots are not something that I think are generally a good idea anywhere, and particularly in a residential area. So.
Agricultural area.
Well, pardon me. Jason, correct me, it is an agriculturally zoned area. You know, it just, I just see it, I just see it as a flag lot.
So we won't put the, we, we're not, we're not asking for a variance for that, but the legal frontage for this lot is on Tibbetts Hill Road. The address is Tibbetts Hill Road. That's where the majority of the frontage is. And last time, we got bogged down on the Snow Road. I'll tell you, I wish I knew that this was a whole new meeting, because I would have done a whole new plan. And the reason we, that is, honestly, that is the best place for access, but if, if the access isn't going to be there, we'll come up from Tibbetts Hill Road. And we're not creating a flag lot, because look, look at the lot. It's, it's wider, and it's going up, and you're going up to the back portion.
And then you're, but you're going down the hill in that long, skinny part down to Tibbetts Hill Road of land that is slopy and wetlands and, you know, and so the buildable portion amounts to a flag lot.
Which is the planning board's job. For, we haven't done, we haven't done test pits. We haven't done wetland flagging out there. Everything is based on this old subdivision plan, which is only requirement for zoning. So a lot of the things you guys are discussing is the planning board's job. When we go for design, and we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a preliminary meeting with them, but by them, we'll have a full boundary survey, topo, test pits, wetland flagging, buffer, all of that. We'll, we'll know what is this land for. Right now, we're looking at frontage variances.
Okay. I, I understand. I think I was a little confused, because at the beginning of your, your comments, you said you're not going for a subdivision. This is a subdivision. It may not be a subdivision, what you're thinking of. It's a subdivision. You're going, that's why you have to go to planning, because that's a subdivision.
This is true, but it, we're not, if we were going for lots that were less than minimum acreage, I would be talking to you about that too, but we're not.
No, you're not. You're talking about frontage.
We're talking about frontage and width by our, I'm sorry, I live in Goffstown. By our regulations, it's, it's, that's where the frontage for this law is. They also have frontage on Snow Road, but this is on Tibbetts Hill Road. That's where the main access, that's what the town considers the access. They would, you know, how, how the client now uses it, I don't know if, if she goes up through there. That's not the point. But to be able to then go past, we can't go to planning without getting the frontage and the width variance from the zoning. That's all we're asking it for.
So what you're looking for is, in that district, you need 200 feet of frontage. You have 160.
Yes, .67.
And this is a big development. This was a large piece of land that has been pieced off over the years, and now it's become, there's one last lot that they didn't leave that fit our zoning. Didn't fit the zoning. Didn't fit the zoning back then. That's my struggle.
I...
They left a house with a piece of land, not large enough, without the setbacks, not the setbacks, excuse me, without the frontage, to create a second lot.
So, does anybody know what the zoning was in 1995? I don't.
I checked with you, after our meeting last time, I did check, to make sure that...
No, but all I'm saying is, the only thing that was subdivided in 1995 was this lot. I didn't go, I, we haven't done the full research of everything of the parent tract, if it was all of these lots that came out as well, if that was the huge original lot, then, you know, two of them are substandard. Was that the zoning then? That's not the purpose of the zoning now. I think we do, the only thing I can think about on this, this piece right here is that because of the soils and the, this lot bumped over, you can tell, if this line had gone straight down, I think for the planning board, perhaps, this was the best place for the driveway to come in because of that soil type finger coming right down next to that property line, and that's where the driveway is. But we don't know, I'm just saying, that was, okay, now, you know. I think to, I think to hinder this lot now, so many years after that last lot was created, And I don't know when the other one lots came out as well.
And I'm not sure if they all came off of it, but it was a lot.
I'd be open to the public.
Bruce, anything to me?
That's pretty soft for it. I know the issue is the lack of frontage properly, it's non-contiguous frontage that we've got the issue with.
We're not asking to include the 30 feet in the, in the frontage, we're not, I'm not asking for variance on...
Snow.
Snow, because, but, but the lot has that, it's, it's, it's pre-existing, so, and why did it, why did that come out that way? We don't know. We don't know if the corner lot with Blackbrook Road, that's put it out, we don't know if the lot, 11 dash, so, so the 11B, the one that's one and a half acres, you know, that was, that, that, that probably definitely came out of our lot, because it was, the current lot is 11-11. So, but 11, 12, 13, didn't, but all the, the lots to the northwest and east, looks like they all came out of this parcel. But they, how and why they did them, we don't know, because we're, I don't like to ask a client to pay for a full research, full survey, before getting a variances, because that's, that's a big expense, full testing.
I guess my, my concern is the, let me say, unorthodox approach of access, not the frontage that we're claiming is going to be the frontage.
Okay, which, and I understand that, but I'm also saying, if I had known that this was a whole new application...
A reconfiguration, like how...
I would not, I would have, I would have just, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have, I would have put the building box, the sep, I wouldn't have done anything about a driveway. And I didn't, I, I left it there because that was what we came in originally, but we do, this lot doesn't have to go off of Snow Road, it can come off of Tibbetts Hill, and the planning board can deal with that. Jason, do you have the minutes from that meeting?
I can get that.
Is that the October or something, I think? It's in my packet.
It would have been the November meeting. Was it October or November?
Well, it doesn't matter, because that...
No, when I, when we talked to rehear this, that's what I want to know, what's in there.
When did we decide to reheare it?
Was that...
Was it the last meeting or the one before?
November.
November, so I just would like to see the notes, what I said.
Oh.
You were there October meeting?
To, when you came back for a rehearing, to see if you could be, that was October?
No, our initial one, our initial was October.
So November is what we were...
So we came back, we're getting rehearing in November.
November.
And then we...
Okay, I just wanted to see those minutes.
Thank you.
I guess it could be taken both ways, so, I mean, I get what you're saying, it's, it says there that we will, we will reheare.
And that's what my opinion was, so, but I, but I also feel that if, I don't know what, again, the driveway can come off of Tibbetts Hill Road. If, if we're getting bogged down on Snow Road, Tibbetts Hill Road.
I for one, I'm not getting bogged down with Snow Road.
Okay, thank you.
That's just my opinion, I'm only one. My issue is the frontage. It's not, it's not the driveway. I mean, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I lived on a flag lot before they, while, when they were legal, okay, so, I understand that. I don't have an issue with where the driveway's going, I have more of an issue with the frontage and what you're asking, so that's...
Hey, Jack, where would it say when, when the lot was created? I'm just curious. Not in the property card, right?
No. Yeah.
The question was asked, and now I'm kind of...
Technically, this lot was created in 1995, because it's the remaining land, when those two lots were subdivided, but when was the parent tract?
Well, that's kind of what I was looking at, because like, I'm looking at 11-1, 11, I'm sorry, 11-1, then an 11A, and then 11B. So they all had to have been done kind of around the same time.
No.
No, they could piece it up every five years.
Because they have 11-1, 11-2, 11ABC, they would, for one, all sorts.
From 91.
The one on D was booked 1102.
90.
If anybody wants to go to the registry, his website looked that D up.
Trying to figure out, because the question was asked, why is this here?
Yeah, right.
Seems to be a math error.
No.
That would be my thought, because if they were created at the same time...
Her parents bought the park, bought their land in 1940.
The listing went, so it's...
Is that helpful?
That was my thought, though.
Right.
Sorry, I was learning.
The Maine farm was purchased in 1940.
Okay, and that's the 4D, the what, well...
1111.
Okay, thank you.
And it probably included all the other 11ABC and 1B and 1.
Square root of six, I got her. Certainly is interesting when we do that kind of stuff.
The other thing, when, I, I think when we came for another lot, that the zoning board was very interested in then, how could those lots be, what was almost the same situation? How, what would the new lot look like? And so preemptively, this is, this is an idea of what these two lots could look like. The only thing that's unknown is the 200 feet and 160 feet. Once you get past the front setback, the width of the lot, our ordinance doesn't give us any control over that, so however, then you might want to do it, and again, it would be dependent upon, you know, you know, access, soils, wetlands, all those things.
So if I'm understanding, is what you're suggesting, that dependent on the surveys and other things, there should, could be some movement of that dividing line that I'm seeing?
Yes.
The interior dividing line between...
Yes.
The new lot and the existing lot?
Yes, as long as, as long as one was a minimum of two acres, and then the other one would, could be the remaining, they could, like, the way I have them is two and a half acres and three, I don't know what I have, but anyway.
2.13 and then 3.23.
Yeah, so, as long as they meet the minimum acreage, there's more than enough land there to, for upland for both lots then, and again, going back to the requirement of a building box, a septic box, and a well radius.
But that's an unknown, because you don't know if they could be there in the first place or not, right?
Uh-uh.
In terms of whether the septic box can actually be where you think it would go?
Where I have it shown, because we haven't done test pits.
Right.
What we're, the only thing we're showing to you is that we have that square, we have the square footages outside of the setbacks. So there's, there is more than enough, and, and test pits are going to be, that's contingent upon everything, which, we don't do that until we're getting ready to do the topo, because again, that's a big expense, the survey. But we, we really need these variances to be able to move forward, to then go do everything we need to do with engineering and planning, well, planning.
Anything further from the board before I open it to the public?
Not this time.
Okay, Cynthia, if you can step back, I'm going to open the hearing to the public now, so...
Is it okay to leave my stuff here?
Okay, I'll ask if there's any members of the public or any abutters to this property who have anything they would like to say regarding this project, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and tell us what you want to say.
My name's Donald Bellowell, I'm one of the abutters. Now, from what I just hear, now this, we went by this map that we were given when this all started on October 1st, at our first meeting. I'm the one that lives next to where the first proposed driveway was, right next to it. Like, the last time, my, my well is right next to that property line, so I find it hard to believe, I'm going to start with, I find it hard to believe that all those wetlands down on Tibbetts Hill Road can be considered as frontage, because the way it's drawn out, you couldn't get a wheelbarrow pass without going over those wetlands. That pond is bigger now than that drawing shows, and, and if you go 100-foot buffer from the end of the wetlands, not the pond, you're in the next door neighbor's property. So I find it hard to believe that any wetlands commission is going to allow them to put a driveway up through there, okay? Now, that, that being said, then they're going to say, oh, well, we can't go with the wetlands, so the only other alternative is to come in off of Snow Road. Well, you come in off of Snow Road, okay, which is, that driveway would be less than 50 feet from my well, which is under my house, okay? Every piece of equipment, when they're talking about drilling, there's going to be plenty of blasting, because that's all ledge up there, my house is built on the ledge, I have no foundation. So that means every piece of equipment, excavator, drilling, blasting, everything, will be going within 38 feet of my house, okay? And less than 50 feet of my well. Now, I look, I see they put a 100-foot buffer for a pond, where's the buffer for my well? If this does happen, now, I know this is all up in the air and it has to go to planning about where the driveway's going to be. Well, the driveway's going to be where, where the mailbox is, and, and like I said, I find it hard to believe that, for one thing, 200, 160 feet is not 200 feet, but this 160 feet should not even be considered as frontage. You go, I walk by there all the time, this, that, there's, there's a swamp there, the pond there, you have all the vegetation from the swamp that goes up, they're just showing it from where the pond is, that vegetation carries up, they, they don't even have 100 feet left there to go onto that property, they're into the next door neighbor's property if you go with the buffer. So, that being said, I don't, I don't even see how that can come into this conversation. And, and you know, with the hills and everything, and what you had stated earlier about the fire department getting up there, how do you turn around, this, that, and every other thing. So, now, we'll go back up to, if it does come in through Snow Road, or even where the house is, well, it's not a house, it's a building, I understand, okay? 80 by 100 is what was, what was proposed. That 4,000 square foot drainage or sewer box is 120 feet away from my home, okay? Or 120 feet away from my existing well, my livelihood, okay? Now, when everything starts drilling, blasting, everything going on here, you know, equipment, I, I work construction, I know, you know, stuff, you know, oil leaks, gas leaks, this and, what, what, I'm taking, I mean, if this goes through, I'm taking a chance of losing my livelihood, my home, that I've lived there for 25 years. Now, I understand, you know, you got to go with the times, but this, this is going to, is going to create a great hardship for me, okay? 30 some odd feet is somebody else's driveway. You go, nobody else's driveway is within 30 some odd feet of somebody's house, okay? And now I know they said, well, we'll change the driveway. I really find it hard to believe any wetlands, they're going to allow them to put a driveway through that wetland down on Tibbetts Hill. So, you know, I just, it, it's not a buildable lot, it, it really isn't, and all that ledge, now, my house isn't on a foundation, it, it's built on that ledge. So when things start working, and I'm on the very top of it, when things start happening there, I, I have a crawl space, I have spaces that I can't even get to under my house, how do I know what's happening during this construction and, and when this is all happening? Now, my house was built in 1971, which the property was bought from the Uptons. Now, according to the first meeting, I know some people weren't here, is, there was an agreement that nobody would build back there with Ms. Upton's father, but he's no longer here, and it's not in writing, but that doesn't mean that there, there wasn't an agreement there. You know, back in the 70s, people did stuff, you know, with a handshake, and you could take their word for it, but because it's not in writing, you know, it is what it is, I guess, but that doesn't mean it never happened. But where that, where they wanted, where they're promoting, you know, saying that it's the best buildable lot, that, that is all rock up there, all ledge, I mean, it is going to be a fiasco. So, so then they say, well, we got to do the perk test, we got to do this, well, how are you going to do that? You're going to need to build a road, and where are they going to build the road from? They're going to build it right from Snow Road to get their equipment in there, because there's no way other than they can do that, they're not going to come in through the wetlands until they get their approvals. So it's going to have to, they would have to come in from that direction. So for them to say that they're not going to, I, I find that hard to believe. But, you know, the whole story has changed from the first meeting, okay? Okay, fine, but I, I cannot see how that 160 feet of frontage could even come into play with all that wetland in there. It's just, you, you go look at it, I mean, it is, there's no way that, that it would be... would be something that would pass, you know? And, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, the zones are there to protect people like myself, are they not? I mean, you know, but what I just heard for the last half hour, 45 minutes, is the rights of the person that wants to change the law. But aren't the, weren't these zones put in place to protect the people like me, you know? I'm pushing retirement age, I, I bought this house 20, over 25 years ago, I want to live there the rest of my life. This is gonna depreciate my property value tremendously, never mind the hardships, okay? You know, I'm not asking anybody, anything of anybody, but I don't think that they have the right to do what's gonna happen to, you know, take the chances of what's gonna happen to my property, my drinking water. I have great drinking water right now, my well does not go duck, it's not a deep well, but it is, it's less than 50 feet from the property line. It's thirty-some-odd feet from the corner of my house to that, where the, where the first proposed driveway was. You know, some guys, and it's 200 feet long as well, you know, and it's not just like somebody just pulling up and starting up to, you know, next to your house, you know what I'm saying? Nobody has driveways that close to people's houses. We live in the country. It's not Pinot Hill, you know? It, it, it's different zoning, you know? Well, you know more about that than I do, but I, I appreciate what you people do, and, and I just, I, I hope you really think about this, because it's gonna create a lot of hardship for me, my property value, and it is not 200 feet, the zone is 200 feet, the lot isn't wide enough, I, it just, I, like I said, I appreciate what you're doing, I, I hope you really take that into consideration, what I just said. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Belliveau. Any other members of the public or abutters who wish to speak? Please come on up and identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Christie Gerlone, and I live at 17 Snow Road with my husband, Christopher. So I know that they have said that it's changed since the beginning, and I'm not really sure of how the driveway not being there, if it's not gonna be there, will affect us, because I don't know if they're gonna have to blast, but the statement that it's not gonna affect us, or it's not gonna, I can't remember the word she used, devalue our homes, I think that's inaccurate, because you just, we don't know at this time what it's gonna do, there's too many unknowns. It doesn't seem like it's a very reasonable property, but this, and the law is the law, and I'm just worried about the wildlife, I really am. I know everybody says that when something like this happens, but those wetlands that she's talking about is what draws all of the animals into that region. And we've had every type of animal, I've seen every type, bobcats, moose, deer. Putting a new property there is gonna mess up that whole pattern, and there's so few areas left that we have this, and it's important to safeguard that, to me, anyway. But Donnie brought up a good point about the blasting. I've seen it, they're gonna, they're gonna have to start blasting that area, and who's gonna be responsible for our properties? Yes, we have house insurance, but we can prevent that beforehand. There's too many unknowns to this. So I'm just putting it on record that I object, just really object to this, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Please come on up.
My name is Brian Gagnon, I'm at 673 Black Brook, I'm one of the direct abutters. What I wanted to point out was that we just purchased our house within the last couple of months, and I don't know if anyone's seen the market lately, but it's quite a search to be able to find a home.
Yeah.
So, once we knew that we landed on Goffstown, we decided to make sure that we were doing our due diligence. So we took a look at all these properties that were abutting us, and we took a look at the requirements for Goffstown. So first thing that we came upon was the two-acre lot requirement, and we immediately looked at our neighbors and realized that this was the only lot that abutted us that could potentially be subdivided. So that's when we found the other zoning requirements. So we were aware of this well before this even happened, and we felt safe. So we knew that when we were purchasing this home, the houses that were there, that was going to be there, people might do some renovations to their homes, things will change as the time goes, but in general, the amount of people that are in this space, that's exactly what we were looking for. We were coming from the city, we wanted nothing to do with the city at any point in time again, and that's why we chose Goffstown, because it was a safe space, we're planning on starting a family, and we wanted to make sure that we had our own privacy within our own yard. We are one of the smaller lots that was built, but we know that that was some pre-existing thing, that it happened at that point in time, so we do acknowledge that sometimes these things do happen. But with that being said, when we're talking about how there has to be no injustice being done, or justice for somebody for this to be changed, I don't know how we can say that that's not happening here. We have people that are in their homes, they've chose these lots, they've chose this town for these exact reasons, and now there's potential for us to just do it just because somebody wants to change the zoning for this property and get these variances, and I just don't see how that is quite justice for the rest of us that live in these surrounding areas. And just in general, I have all the other concerns, I see where the house is looking at going, regardless of where the driveway is, when you compare it to my property, and where my house sits within my lot, this is gonna be right within our backyard space where this house is going to go. And I take a look at it more so, okay, if we're gonna justify that we are going to have less than 200 feet of road frontage, I kind of want to see the lot where it's going, because there's lots of houses that have a nice narrow driveway and then open up into a big space. So I kind of try to envision, would it be reasonable to have that 200 feet within this box, that area that they're doing? And I don't see that we would have that with on all four sides of this property to be able to build a house in there. So I just don't see any justification for changing something that's there to protect the rest of us, and that's kind of how I feel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else wish to speak? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you very much, folks. Cynthia, did you want to come up and speak to anything that was raised by the abutters?
Yes, thank you so much. So the, I had given you two drawings, I gave you the town GIS with the trees and the clearing spaces, and then I made another map where I gave you distances from each of the abutters to the propping line. Now, the, so that doesn't even take into account the setback lines for the proposed lot, for the proposed lot, which we would be intending to meet all setbacks. So with regards to, again, you know, the, the wetlands and the, wherever the wetlands may be, and the pond, I'll, I'm just gonna go through as the abutters discuss that. The, from when we, when we had the TRC meeting, we discussed that, and we were told that a driveway can go through the buffer if that's the only way to get to a lot. So coming off of, we know that we can, we could get a driveway on Tibbetts Hill, we could, you know, put it around, and you can, when you look at the topo map, the, where, where, where would the best place be for a driveway? We won't know, but that is something that the, the state and the engineering, we might have to replicate those wetlands, that's something that does happen. So to, to base, you know, we're, we're really talking about the access and driveways and everything, when all we really should be talking about is we need variances for frontage and width. We can replicate the wetlands on-site if we have to fill wetlands, that's a standard. The state looks at it, if that's the only way you can get to your lot, they allow you to fill wetlands, but then they ask you to replicate that square footage, so.
But we are creating this issue. We would be creating a lot that would allow you to go into wetlands.
If there's, but that's not, that's not, you're not creating a lot, you're creating a variance so that we could go to planning, they can deny us.
Right, but the ultimate, the ultimate, the ultimate resolution of this is, is creation of a new lot, so that's something that can be taken into account. I understand what you're saying, we're just looking at frontage, but from my perspective, we need to look at this as the whole, what is the result of this, what is the effect on the zone, what is the effect on the neighborhood? I, I was just kind of writing some notes here, but I've taken, you know, classes about zoning and, and boards and stuff, and, and we're supposed to be like a reasonable buffer between the ordinances or an agreed property owner and the neighborhoods, like, we're kind of the balancing act. And this is knowledge that we know has to be there, it's common sense, like, here's how we're gonna have to do things. So to say that we can't take into account a driveway being there, to me, I know a driveway has to go there, it has to, there's, there's no alternative, you need a driveway. There's only two options, it's gonna come from Tibbetts Hill going through the wetlands, or it's gonna come from Snow Road. That, that's, those are the options. But we can use that as part of our decision-making process. I want to make sure that that's clear.
You know, I would have to agree that we'd be very careful to grant a variance that creates a non-buildable lot as an end result. For instance, if they don't grant access through a wetland buffer, then they're forced to go on Snow Road, and then that's a setback issues maybe with the driveway or the, the well of the Bolio property. So I think we have to tread really lightly on approving something of a variance that might create a problem that doesn't get buildable.
So with regards to, again, I, I'll go, not a buildable lot, this, when, when you think about a non-buildable lot, it's, let's say, that would be a lot with no access, you know, backlots that absolutely have no way, they could have had a, you know, a cart road that we could get there, but this, this is, this is a buildable lot. This is very much a buildable lot with five acres. There's a lot that could be done with this five acres, okay? I mean, it's, it's a nice piece of property. Now, and Mr. Bolio, Belliveau said, you know, he's at the top, well, we can see from the topo that yes, he is at the top, he's at 640, and then it's all going down. I, I don't doubt that there's all ledge on his lot, I am not, I don't know for certain where other ledge is, because we haven't done the survey and we haven't done test pits. That being said, the back of his house is 152 feet from his back property line, and I didn't measure the distance from his house corner to the side property line, but he's saying it's, there was 120 feet to his well, but the, but the real lot, I mean, the fact that his well is under his house is extremely unusual for a house that was built in 1971. So there, so there's that. The, the next abutter really was discussing that putting another single-family home in there would devalue their homes. I, I, I do disagree with that. I, I, I'm sure there's a lot of wildlife out there walking through there, I, I think that's great, but we are now getting into borrowed landscape. Mrs. Upton owns that five acres, so everybody else is benefiting from that, let's say, that additional three acres. This is her land, so that she can, it's a borrow, there, we're, everything that's being discussed is a borrowed landscape. I, as a surveyor, highly doubt that there isn't someplace in that, you know, back behind her house, somewhere in that area, that we could get a septic system in a house and we could build it. Would they have to blast? I don't know, but everybody's talking about blasting with no evidence. That is not something for the zoning board to take into consideration.
But just for peace in mind of, to everybody, that whoever is doing the project and blasting, they are 100% responsible for any damage that's done to your house, and they will actually do an assessment of people's properties before they blast. Or they should be.
Well, and, and I probably agree with that, but there's quite a distance, as, as I, from my sketch that I gave you, from each house to, as we get into that back area. And also interesting, of course, is that all of the parcels around this five acres have already been developed. So did they all have to be blasted? Was that a problem for all of tho, those houses as well? I haven't heard anything that when the last house built, my house was disturbed. If I had heard that, I'd be like, oh, okay. You know, I mean, it's, it's Goffstown, we're either flat gravel, or we're ledge, or we're wetlands, that's, that's what we are, you know, that's our thing. So, and then the, the Gagnon on Black Brook Road, saying that, you know, they have the smaller lot, they have a nice deep lot, it's 144 feet from the back of their deck to the property line, which is quite a bit of waste. They've, they've got a nice open backyard, but to inhibit an abutter from either using that, I mean, we could timber that, and I'm, and I don't, I don't mean to say we, we could do whatever we wanted to, but there's a lot of options that this, this land can be used at, and you're in a single-family neighborhood, and all we're asking for is the possibility of a variance, and that is the purpose. We're not chang, somebody had mentioned changing the zoning. We're not asking for a zoning, the purpose of the zoning board is to grant variances. We're not doing spot zoning here, we're not asking to put, you know, a business back there, or, you know, it's agricultural land, we're asking to have, to be able to have a variance for frontage and width for the possibility of another lot. And I, and I, and I will go, I, I, I do not, I hear a lot, I underst, I understand where the abutters are coming from, and I don't think it's gonna be as bad as they think it might be, but they really.
Please keep it down, folks. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Um, we're really discussing, they, they want to benefit from that five acres, and that, that's a hardship for Mrs. Upton, okay? This is her land, those are, so. Do you have any more questions?
Not at, not at this time.
There is a question, so we don't want to close the.
All right, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I am not closing the hearing yet, so, because one, one of the things, I will just offer the comment of my own, I think one of the things that I find disturbing, and perhaps other board members do, we've been asked to take a lot of things on faith about the frontage here, where the configuration is probably one of the most oddly-drawn residential lots that I have seen in 10 or 15 years on this board, which I understand the reason why it was done, but it seems, appears to me to be a situation where, you know, we're attempting to, we're, it's a lot that may not perhaps lend itself to subdivision, but we've somehow managed to come up with something that forces it into this weird hammerhead design, and I, that's one of the aspect, the configuration is one of the aspects that I find disturbing. You've got, originally had a driveway on one end, claiming to use the frontage on the other end, to which there's no access to, there's just a lot of strange things about the configuration here that I find troubling.
I may also add, I think, to me, it's classically out of character, that, that odd configuration, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that, it's not a nice, clean, equal box, dimension-wise, it's, I don't know how to describe the shape, but it's, it's not like anybody else is in the property, they're pretty well rectangles or a little bit of an angle for a triangle, but, so to me, that's, I wrestle with that, having a conforming, characteristically shaped lot, that, that this width variance is creating, or asking for, I just, I have a hard time with that.
And even, even if the shape were a bit off from a true square or a rectangle, again, something like this just looks like. like this just looks like an attempt to draw the lines in a way that you get something out of it, whether it fits the character of the land or not.
With regards to that, the existing lot was created in 1995. With this unusual, you know, we don't know why. They just took the standard lot. It's two and a half acres, Lot 11-2, and that was the remaining. But that was quite a long time ago. I think... I understand what you're saying, but I also think that the... I really feel like the... A lot of the stuff that we're discussing is the planning board. You could have two acres, and you're not gonna have that three acres be that as unusual. We can do things. That was the... That's a conceptual plan that we brought. So, to get bogged down on either where the driveway's gonna be or the conceptual lots for the purposes of asking for a variance where there's a hardship, it's inherent in that five acres, that there's a hardship there. That's what we're asking of you. We're discussing a lot of things. They're not part of the variance.
Can you explain to me what the hardship is? And I'm not being...
No.
Explain that to me. What exactly the hardship is?
The hardship is that the existing frontage is 360.67 feet. It's a five-acre lot. If she had 400 feet of frontage, we wouldn't be here, and she could just subdivide it. And she could very well, the planning board could say, yeah, that driveway has to go up Snow Road for the best access, safety, everything. It's a shorter driveway. It's this, it's that. We don't know that. But... So, therefore, the hardship is in the land. You have five acres in a zone that requires two acres. So, the hardship is less than the total amount of frontage needed. And that's exactly what zoning is for. Thank you.
The... When we're looking at these maps, right? So, 11-11 was the base, and then 1 and 1B and 2 came from the 11 map?
Yes.
Okay. And you said Ms. Upton's been in this property since, for 78 years?
Forty, yes. Her parents, her parents and her, yes.
Okay. So, that means that this land was carved out as part of the family property?
I would say you are correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
And we, you know, yeah.
Okay.
1940, not 40 years.
I'm sorry?
1940, not 40 years, she said.
Since 1940, so it's...
Okay.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Okay. So, then this would've been carved out at that time?
Seventy-eight.
Yeah. Sixty-five.
Eighty-five, yeah. It's eighty, because I'm like them.
Yeah. I get it. I get it.
Like, wait a minute.
No one can do math in their head. In other words...
And it was never... I don't believe it was ever... That plan doesn't refer to a... It wasn't a subdivision, per se, that we would go in and we would subdivide this piece. I think it was, you know...
Well, you're selling the pieces of land and carving it out.
Yeah, that's 1995.
I would call it a subdivision.
The other 11, A, B, C, or...
I would call it division. And then a subdivision would be subsequent.
Is it possible that the parcel that we're talking about here was the residual land left after the other parcels around it had been sold off?
That's exactly what it is. So, and I'm pretty confident. I mean, Don DuVall, he's retired. He's a surveyor for that plan, but, you know, but the land as it's left, the good news is, is that he did create 11-2 and 11 as we know them today. There was a lot of times, you know, back in the day where you would subdivide off two acres and you might say plus or minus for the remaining land. That doesn't seem to be the case of this 1995 plan, but, you know, again, we don't know... I'm not sure if I asked Patty for the... Any planning notes or folders. I don't believe she had any. But anyway, it's... Thank you, sorry.
Did we hear from that person?
Anything else from the members of board? Was there someone else in the audience who wished to be heard going on? It's going twice. Please, no side conversations, folks. Address yourself to the board. All right. Nothing else? We have anything in closing into you before I close the public hearing?
Yeah, I would just... You know, I'm probably just being redundant, but I really feel that this parcel does meet the five items to receive a variance. We really got bogged down on outside things. My fault, but I do believe the board likes to know how will the land be used and everything. I don't... I do understand what you're saying about a flag lot, but in that case, then, you know, the existing... It's the hardship because the existing lot is how it was the remainder, but you have five acres of good land in Goss Town. All she's looking for is for the variance on frontage and width to possibly get another lot.
All right. Thank you very much. With that hearing, nothing else from board, I'm going to close the public hearing, and let me ask for sense of the board on this. We have two other, rather appear to be complex cases to hear this evening. And do we want to deliberate this now or hold deliberation to the end?
I'd rather deliberate now.
Yeah, me too.
All right. The sense of the board is we will go ahead and deliberate now, so the floor is open, folks.
So, going through the criteria, I don't... I'm gonna skip some, but I'm gonna go right to four. I don't think it's gonna diminish the values of the homes. I... That is one thing I don't feel it will. Is it in the spirit of the ordinance? I don't... I don't think it is. The reason for the frontage is to space out houses. And there have been times that we do grant variances for people who have under the footage, but they don't... They have a width. This is just trying to, to me, create a lot. It's really stretching the zoning policies, I think, right to the limit. I'm not hung up on either one of the driveways. That's not what's bogging me down. It's really, you're at... We don't have frontage. The lot is narrow. It's like an hourglass at some points, you know? I just... I'm struggling with it.
So, that's part of the thoughts that I had, too. I mean, I took a lot of notes on this one. I mean, I would argue that there's not a buildable situation. There's wetlands, and then the topology adds to it. So, if they put a house in the back, right? Because of the topology, that house is going to be above 673, so they're gonna conceivably, as the homeowner had said from there, have them in their backyard. So, that's one thing. It was brought up that a well under a house is odd, but it exists, so it's something that I think we need to think about. We can use personal experience and knowledge as part of our deliberations, and from personal experience, blasting in a place where there's ledge has very, very, very far-reaching fingers. And it's not always clear, because of state regulations, that people who would be affected are necessarily not contacted.
So, my opinion on that is you can blast in the town of Goss Town, you can blast in the city of Manchester. Of course you can. And I don't have an issue with the blasting, as long as they meet the setback and they follow the policies and the rules that apply to the town of Goss Town. So, the blasting is not an issue for me.
Well, so, having experienced it, it is for me.
But you have to follow zoning and following laws.
I agree, but I think that's one component, right? Because we have a neighbor who I think is... Has got a valid complaint about how ledge blasting would affect his well. Ledge blasting would affect his house on crawl space on that area. And you're right. I mean, a responsible blasting company would have all of that covered by their insurance.
No, no. Not irresponsible. They will have that covered by their insurance. It's part of doing a business. You have to get permits.
No, I...
Okay.
I hear what you're saying from the construction industry. I get it.
Well, you have to have permits. You have to be insured.
But I think sometimes there's science there, too. And I think sometimes that gets ignored. But that being said, again, my personal experience is what I'm using here. Even... And I started writing this before the neighbors came up, but even if we were to step back and this was 70, 80 years ago when this was done, I really wouldn't be in favor of allowing any of this in the first place because, like was said, I moved to Goss Town because I wanted to move to an agricultural, like, I didn't want to be in the city. I wanted to be wet. And if we start taking a look at how neighborhoods and that kind of thing is affected, that does start to affect things like home values. And neighbors who've done their research to say, okay, I've got zoning rules that are protecting me from this. I've done my due diligence to select my home. I moved to Goss Town for these reasons, and it's the same reasons I came here. You know, the hardship, I agree, is the land, but the land is designed for agriculture. And I'm gonna go back to that because it was said that the zone was designed for single-family homes. It's not. The agricultural zone, I have to go to my zoning rules here, but it says, "It's a district, a mixed-use district established to accommodate residential development in low densities and rural settings, together with agricultural, forestry, outdoor recreational, and other compatible uses on large lots, where municipal utilities may not be present or anticipated." It's not...
But we're looking at the residential part of that. We're not looking at the wooded areas in this.
But it's agriculture. And I have to go back to, well, okay, what could be done? And it's not in our purview to tell a homeowner what they could do. That being said, it could be timbered to generate revenue.
Do I say that?
It could be sold as a farming lot because it's an agricultural lot. It could be used to raise, you know, animals and whatnot. So, there is agricultural use there. And we've done a lot, or at least not me, but I've seen a lot of agricultural land in this, in Goss Town eliminated because of development. So, like you said, the frontage was brought in to...
Development's not a bad thing. And you think you'll go on the record saying that it is.
Well, no, no, and I don't.
Be careful. You know, it's not a bad thing. It's what this town needs, as long as zoning is... And we don't make the zoning rules.
Right. And the zone right now is agricultural, and I think that should be respected as well. I think that's the end of my notes.
If you're...
Is that good? Thank you.
Okay, are you done, Jason?
I am.
I'll just go back to something, that point that I think Bruce raised me. Four, one of the things here is we're being asked to approve this with an awful lot of unknowns regarding the property and whether we approve something like this, and then we end up with an unbuildable lot. Looking at the map that Cynthia provided there, and looking at the 100-foot wetland buffer that we're talking about, even as existing, that goes virtually over to the borders of the two neighboring properties on the south. I don't know if wetlands have been flagged. There are many things here that I just... Questions that needed to be answered, and we're just basically asked, okay, well, all we need is the width and the setback. Well, no, I just think that there is more because when we talk about going into wetlands buffers, we have developers who come here all the time looking for variances to go through wetlands buffers for variance, or to build within the inner 100 feet of surface water wetlands buffers. There are just... There are too many unknowns in this request for me to feel comfortable with it.
And talk about going into the buffer. You know, people will go into that. They will get... A planning board will allow it. But this, you're creating the issue. There's not a lot here. If this was a lot and it... You couldn't get through the buffer, then you by law have to be able to get through it. That's different. No, this is creating that. That is my big concern. More than anything else, that's my concern.
Bruce, screw up something?
I like to do my determinations based on the criteria.
Yes.
So, from the first granting of the variance would or would not be contrary to the public interest, I believe it would be contrary. The frontage is not in harmony with the neighborhood. The zoning ordinance is asking for 200 feet, and to maintain that in the width of continuous and not this odd configuration. I mean, it doesn't... It would be contrary. Second, the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed because the spirit of the ordinance is to create basically rectangular lots. And this is not creating a rectangular lot, so it is contrary to that. Three, granting of the variance would not do substantial justice because they can use the original property. They're asking for, in this configuration, to add for density another dwelling unit. I believe in this zone, you could build an addition to the original house and have that additional dwelling unit, same density of having the subdivision. Four, the following reasons, number four, the values of the surrounding properties, that's always a hard one. I believe it would be diminished, only because the lot size configuration is way out of character. That's different than everybody else's. Will it be a benefit for their value or a detriment? I don't know. But I think that does diminish the value, I think, in my opinion. And then the hard one, the unnecessary hardship. It's being created by this plan, the application. We're going through the wetland for some of the frontage that we're asking for a variance. It's unfortunate that this is a... It's an odd configuration style, so it is unique from the parent, the parent lot, this subdivision, and we're creating another substandard, or not substandard, but another awkward And again, the applicant can use the original layout and get an additional dwelling unit, which is the ultimate goal of this subdivision, is for another dwelling unit. So, I would call it denying.
All right. Anyone else?
So, I just wanted... You brought up another thought, but while we were doing this, I actually went to the USGS and pulled up the wetlands map and overlaid it.
Has it changed a lot?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a...
I can show you guys. You can go to the USGS and download it to add it to Google Maps, but you can see... Here it goes. You can see that that is a huge... That's a huge, from basically from road to road, which is... is what somebody had said.
What's a wetland right now? Should point it out, which one we're talking--
The green and blue?
Yes.
So blue is the pond, but the green is the wetland. And that's from the USGS KMZ file.
Thank you.
So in addition to the wetland, there's a buffer. That's not showing that map.
That's not showing the buffer. It's just showing the wetlands. But if you start measuring, which is what I started doing, there's not a lot of space. I mean, it's, we're looking at, you know, roughly--
It's going into other lots.
That's my biggest fear of creating the possibility of another lot that's not buildable. I mean, it's really, it's not right justice to the applicant to do that, in my opinion.
All right. Anything else from the board? And if not, I'll gladly accept a motion from someone.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion to deny based on my criteria that I explained.
I will second.
Discussion first, please. I would just like to take out that we look for rectangular lots in this town. I don't, I just don't want to put that in a motion because that's not necessarily the case. There have been different shaped lots just because of the topography of this town, the roads.
A geometrically configured--
Well, you know what I mean. I don't want this coming back.
A standard configuration--
A standard lot configuration. I guess, yeah, I'll be with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I approve your motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? No? I'm sorry, folks, your variance is denied again. And I'm going, I'm going to, if anyone is here for the other matters before us tonight, we're going to take a five-minute recess before we start hearing the next case on the agenda. TV, you can resume the recording now if you wish. Okay, next case on our agenda tonight. Charles Farley, Megan and Richard Thompson, owner-applicants are seeking a variance to allow for a detached accessory dwelling unit to be built on a lot that has a three-bedroom single-family home currently under construction. Detached accessory dwelling unit will be 800 square feet with a 200-square-foot unfinished utility room that services the accessory dwelling unit, along with a proposed 576-square-foot two-car garage that will be attached to the utility room. The variances are required per section 5.2, 5.2.1, and 5.2.2 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance as the accessory dwelling unit will not be attached to the single-family home and exceeds the maximum allowable size of 800 square feet gross floor area. The property is located at 46 Sari Drive, map four, lot 25-dash-four, zone conservation and open space. Before we proceed any further with tonight's hearing, it's been brought to the board's attention that you're probably before the wrong board here in town. Looking at our zoning ordinance, there are two, several factors, one of which is detached ADUs are not allowed under Goffstown's current zoning ordinance. However, under 3.7.2 of the zoning ordinance, multiple principal uses on a single lot, more than one single-family dwelling may be located on a single lot pursuant to section 13.5, open space development. Now, without going into details, from what I know of this application, since we're talking about a secondary structure 400 feet from the main house with its own septic system and other things, it seems clear to me we're looking at a second principal use on a lot. And I would suggest that more appropriately, this case needs to go to the planning board for open space development approval. Any other members of the board have anything to add?
I would agree.
So, you know, we're sorry, you were probably not given good information on it. I think it is still possible to do the project that you're talking about, but it's going to need to go, it's not a zoning issue. It's going to need to go through planning as a development issue and to get, you know, to talk to them about a second principal use on what's now a single-family lot. It's something that is out of our purview.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
This one, we know is going, that's where it's got to go. It's got to go to planning.
I'm sorry, I would, you know, the man on the end here can give you information about how to go about it, but I mean, it's really just a matter of you get your paperwork in order and take it through the planning board to, you know, see if you can get the necessary approvals for your project. But it is not a matter that zoning can help you with at this point. Okay.
Thank you, sorry. Please.
See Patty in the morning. Okay. All right. Thank you.
And that's 3.7.2 in case you need a reminder of the section.
Thank you.
Never remember what that table of principal uses. You have to do it with that one. Good job. 3.7.2. No, there it is. I got it. Principal uses.
Jack, who sent him here?
Well, I sent her where Patty--
Well, we've always--
Patty sent this right here. Stay out of the side conversations, folks, and move right along.
Sorry.
See if I have any voice left by the time we're done here tonight. So, okay, the next case we're dealing with is Douglas Standbridge. Standbridge Home Improvements LLC applicant and Julie and Chris Abbott owners are seeking a variance to allow for an accessory dwelling unit to be constructed within this, the existing basement of a single-family home that will be 1,250 square feet, whereas the maximum gross floor area allowed is 800 square feet per sections 5.2 and 5.2.1 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 33 Shirley Hill Road, map two, lot 66-dash-two, zoned agricultural. Mr. Standbridge, I presume?
Yes, good evening.
Tell us what you want to do.
So you summed it up pretty good. We have an existing permitted ADU space within this basement currently. It is, that's for the 800 square feet. We're actually just under 794. So we're requesting to expand that, or existing permitted space to the full basement layout, essentially. So in order to reach, get within that, under the 800 square feet, we actually divided up part of the main existing space, basically like a temporary demising wall. If this is approved, it'd be, it would be temporary. And there's an existing framed other room as well that we'd look to add to this permitted space. I would like to add, too, that this, this existing layout was already framed when the homeowners bought this space. So I listed it here, I can read through it, but I actually demoed that space because the framing was incorrect. It was not to code. It was too close to the wall and they were actually developing mold anyway, so that was all removed. So we're asking to rebuild as the existing layout was, which would require the variance to hit the higher square footage.
Previous work, to your knowledge, was something that had been done by the homeowner without permits?
From, yeah, most likely, it seems. It was unpermitted. It was used as the, as a summer art school, to my knowledge. It was used as the, as a summer art school, to my knowledge. Actually, my helper actually used to go to it, that's how I found that out, so, but yes, so I'm assuming that space was unpermitted. It wasn't fully finished, it was framed and drywalled, no.
Did it have a kitchen?
No, no, it just had a, it had an existing bathroom and a drywall, no, it's just a concrete slab floor, no, no flooring.
So, looking at your sketch, the area you're referring to is gonna be these two rooms at the top of the sketch, proposed, proposed.
Yes.
And removing this existing partition here.
Yes.
So, you're expanding into the...
Yes, and I would like to know too, even if, you know, there was an approval with contingencies or conditions, rather, even if we were able to remove that temporary wall, that would help with the, the main, the main living space, even if you could separate from that other room as well. That other room is just, would be storage or maybe some sort of office, but...
So, you started from scratch on this?
Well, cause I demoed, I'm sorry, sorry.
Pretty much, you're starting from scratch?
Yeah, cause I demoed the existing, except for the two interior-framed walls around the stairwell that I left. Also, there's a, there's a demising wall between the mechanical space that I left as well. But all the exterior walls below grade were removed because, like I said, it was two-by-four walls, tight, fiberglass tight to the foundation, and we already saw signs of mold, so we removed all that.
So, what you're asking us for is a 1,000-square-foot ADU unit where 800 feet is allowed by our code?
Well, I'm actually, the whole space is 1,250 if the entire space was approved, so 1,250 as opposed to 800, but we, like I said, I could, you know, we had to accept a smaller amount, we could, there's two different areas that could be potentially approved. But yes, 1,250 over, you know, to the, compared to the 800, which is...
The town people have pretty strict that they want to maintain the 800 feet.
So, would it be possible to reconfigure the access to that main house and keep it separate so that the 800 still exists?
So, that's what we've already done.
Oh, you did that?
Yes, so we, the 800 square feet is already permitted, and we're actually ready for inspections on that portion. So, yes, that gives you access into the, into the space from outside and also access to the fire door up to the livable space upstairs, the existing house. So, yes, that is already configured that way.
Is this space above grade or below grade? Does it have the egress windows or...
Yes.
...egress?
So, yes, we, it is partially below grade, so at the bottom of that sketch, that entire wall is a walkout, so the bedroom will have an egress, the master bedroom has an egress window, which had to be, the existing window is not egress, but we're actually, we already ordered the existing, it's, sorry, the new egress window to go into that space to make that an egress window. So, on that, below, sorry, the walkout portion has the slider and a bathroom window and then an egress bedroom window. The other walls are all below grade.
So, my other question, I don't know if I'm reading this right, it looks like there's two stairs that get the long...
It has a mid-landing.
And it turns and goes?
Yes, it goes back up, yeah.
Okay. So, okay, so I'm missing the arrow here.
So, the bottom of that stairwell is the fire door on, in the current basement space, that eliminates the stairs from the square footage.
Yep. And so, that would be then the pockets with the main house?
Yes.
For their calculation.
Yes.
So, that's what's always the hard part with these, trying to move that fire door or that separation door?
Right.
Around to get the 800 foot?
Right.
Saved, and then they can use the...
Also, the...
That's the hard juggle.
Right. And the upstairs is already finished, and we didn't want to put a fire door into an existing, like, livable space, you know, it doesn't match the rest of the doors, so, you know. So, it benefits, obviously, the square footage of the ADU request and also the existing home upstairs. I'm happy to read through the points if you guys like at any point.
Sure.
Yeah, in that photo, you'll see under the deck on the far-left side is the existing bedroom window, which would be swapped out for the egress.
And you have a permit for an 800?
Yes.
Yep. Technology, this works for me.
Can you see it's the slider?
Yeah, it's the best, yeah. So, the, um, so the 800, the ADU that's there now, is that, is that occupied as an ADU?
No, so we, that is currently at rough framing, rough electrical, rough plumbing inspections, they're all.
Okay, and the usage for that is for the existing owners to...
The exist, the existing owner's parents.
Oh, the existing owner's parents, I got that.
Yes.
I mean, they could rent it, I mean, that's...
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Yep.
Regarding, regarding the square footage in the area outside the 800-foot ADU area, that would be left in rough frame, drywall, I mean, one of the things that we wrestle with on these, there's this question of gross square footage, and obviously, it's way over on the gross square footage, but to make, or that somehow that gross square footage doesn't, over the years, get, shall we say, transitioned into part of it, you, you'd, it would be left in partly finished, rough finished?
Yeah, rough framing. So, the only thing is, I did discuss with Jack, is to, the insulation we're using is a rock wool insulation, which is beneficial for moisture mainly in this application. So, we were gonna frame the entire exterior and have that insulation as a complete perimeter all the way around, so I don't have to insulate two-by, try to insulate two-by-four walls or rip down all those existing walls that are in there. Cause if I, if I, essentially, if I didn't insulate the exterior around the foundation, all those interior walls would be demoed to be two-by-six to accommodate the R21 requirement. So, it would be left in, at a minimum, rough frame, insulated with poly into those spaces.
So, can I talk to the board, ask questions?
Yeah.
Cause I'm just kinda, well, if you had an ADU unit that was attached to the first floor of your house, you have a door that walks in, you could walk into the living room, share the living room if you choose, it doesn't matter, but the technical ADU unit is from the door over. That could apply in the basement as well. A lot of people have a finished family room. I mean, you can't, that's, as long as it's separated, I don't think that's, would be in our purview. It's the ADU unit, in my eyes, it's gonna stay at 800 feet, that, that's how I feel, but it doesn't mean the rest of that basement must be unfinished.
Right.
They can use that for the enjoyment of...
What I would do is have dual access, really.
Right.
Is come down those stairs and turn the door each way into the existing bedroom, that's 225 square feet, and go the other way to the post office and water closet?
The walk-in, walk-in closet.
Oh, walk-in closet, okay. In front of that existing fire door, now the main owner still has access to that, and they can claim that is there, deducted from the ADU, the ADU still has there.
Right, separate.
That's how I would try to approach it. Get in the box of the zoning ordinance, you know?
I understand, yeah.
It's practical, I know, it's gonna look a little dorky, but...
Yeah, that'd be feasible, but essentially, you're saying, sorry, can I?
Well, that way, it's not separating just the ADU.
Right.
The main gets to use that.
Right. So, the, come down the stairs, those two bedrooms that are shown are considered part of the finished basement?
Right.
For the upstairs, and then?
Their use.
And then the rest of it would be?
Calculated as the ADU.
What's important is the ADU unit stays 800 feet.
Correct.
But the access has to be on the existing home side to access those spaces.
Right, correct.
Yeah, it's feasible.
But, I, I think it's the best way to try to fit in the lot.
I, I think it's, we're trying, ADUs is something we wrestle with a lot, and we're trying to think creatively within the bounds of the zoning law, because everyone knows the housing crisis we are in these days?
Right.
And the need for more housing, particularly for seniors, so, you know, I think what Bruce suggests is, you know, is a good, so, a good solution which would observe the spirit of the ADU law, you know, and...
And not have to get a variance.
Yeah.
That, that's the ultimate to me, is...
Right, yeah.
How can you not have to get a variance?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, cause...
The subject is, is ample.
And they already have it. They already have the variance, right?
Right.
The permit, yeah, the permit for the ADU.
They already have the permit.
But, but they've gotten a variance for an ADU unit, for 800 feet.
They would've gotten that original one.
How did they get, oh, they don't need one.
They don't need one.
Oh, well, there we go.
Right.
Yeah, remember that change in the law?
That's right, that's right, thank goodness.
Yeah, double, double fence.
Yeah, and then, that, that satisfies my, my concern of having a 56% overage request for an ADU.
Yeah, I would come close to that, no.
Yeah, I understand your point, that's why I was also saying, even if it was a partial of the space, to lower that.
Yeah, withdraw.
All right, well, let me ask Mr. Stanbridge, if you have nothing more to add at this point, I'll ask if there's anyone back in the audience who wishes to be heard on this. Going one, come on, come on up, if you can step back, sir.
Mr. Stanbridge, thank you. Hi, I'm Julie Abbott, one of the owners, my husband Chris. So, we bought this house for 33 Shirley Hill, Labor of Love. So, we bought this house maybe 60-something days ago, and I know it's not the board's problem, but we did a lot of due diligence when we were buying this house, it was about five months of negotiations. Anybody who has seen this house knows that it needs a lot of work. We didn't have to move, well, I'm a New Hampshire native, we both were born and raised here. We lived in Hooksett, where we had a beautiful house and had to sell it to take care of his parents. So, they have moved in with us, and it's, I'm sorry, a little emotional. We didn't have to move, we loved our house, but this house suited us because of the basement, and it was funny enough, cause our kids went to art camp there, so anybody who knows the whites.
That's funny.
When we saw it online, we were like, oh, man, that's art camp. So, really, the two reasons why we bought this house was the basement for the in-laws, for the parents, and the garage for my husband and trying to grow his business so he could stay home more to take care of the elderly parents. So, we had a contractor come in when we did the walkthrough, we thought he had done the due diligence, and, cause we asked, what are the, you know, what are the requirements? Can we do this? And he said he checked it out with the town, obviously didn't, we had two different realtors that said it was all set, so, here we go, we, you know, sell our beautiful house in Hooksett, sign our life away by this money pit, and here we are. And now we have two elderly parents living with us, and they can't go downstairs yet. So, I know not, not any of your problems, but wanted to give you that background, we love Goffstown, we're happy to be here. I don't know a lot of the construction things, I'll leave that to the guys, I take care of human beings, so that's what I'm trying to do with them. So, I appreciate any consideration, and hopefully Doug is a magician, we're so glad we found him to help us not only with that, but, you know, the house in general, so, we appreciate any consideration that we can, we can have.
Well, welcome to town.
Thank you.
We, we do understand a great deal about what's going on with housing these days, and you know, we're attempt, we attempt where we can to...
I know, I appreciate that.
See, see what we can do to make people's lives easier, so, with that...
Yep, they're living still on our first floor with us, one big happy family.
We, we generally, we make it a point to not make suggestions on what the homeowner can do to fix the problem.
No, we get in trouble.
But we have to do...
Understood, understood.
You know, you may have heard an idea that just happened to go out.
I think Doug's coming up with some new plans.
If they wanted to withdraw that, that would give them the opportunity to request it later, if they ever needed one, down the road, if they ever happened to want to.
Okay. We'll caucus and figure this out.
And that's true.
I don't know if my husband wants to say anything, but, thank you.
There would be no other variances on the house.
No, it would just be building permits.
Okay, anyone else? Cynthia?
I, I missed half of this, I'm sorry, I was talking to my clients. So, I was, I thought that we, sorry, Cynthia Bovier, concerned resident.
Blah, blah, blah.
But I am a resident.
I know you are.
So, the, so the new ADU law, the RSA, it seems to me that they increased the size, and then they talked about detached unit. Now, I don't know if it, I was just Googling while we were doing it, so, and I know that, oh, you have it right there?
We go by this.
Yeah, you're looking at the stain.
Oh, okay, but, but I know that there's bigger ADUs in Goffstown. I have two very, two very near me that are detached and bigger than 800 square feet, and I'm not gonna tell you where they are.
Oh, I know where one of them is, and I know who it is. But, the, the law is, in ours, in we're, you know?
I, I know, but I just...
As you know, we follow it.
I know, but it's just, you know, and as I read this, and it's, you know, it's talking about you couldn't do 750, I'm thinking, oh, my God, 800's already too small. Anyway, I don't have a vote, but I'd say, they should be able to have a little bit bigger.
I will, I will only say on the ADU stuff, talk to your state representatives, because that's a big part of the problem, what goes on in Concord.
No, Concord wants them bigger. Concord wants them bigger.
All right, let's, let's not get off track with the public hearing. Anybody else in the back wishes to be heard?
We need to recommend that they withdraw. I think that's by doing them a service.
Mr. Stan, Mr. Stanbridge, you wanna come on up first?
Sir.
The property owners can come up too.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna bring your clients up, but our, the way it appears, that's, and, you know, particularly with Bruce's suggestion about ABLE, you have the ADU by right. At this point, you do not need to, to request 1,250 feet for, square feet for the ADU, unless you wanna go forward in that fashion, if you wanted to withdraw that at this point, proceed on the assumption of 850 square feet and hold that 1,250 for something in the future if you should need to be expanded, that is one possibility. We, we shouldn't be, we try not to suggest courses of action to applicants, but this is something that might...
Yeah.
Serve you and your clients better.
Yeah, I guess my understanding was that we couldn't necessarily separate that space in this way. Obviously, like you said, it might get a little odd with some extra doors and things like that, but if we're able to withdraw the variance request, have the ADU permit as is, and then I might have to submit some drawings, but then, and then request, I'm assuming, a separate, like, finished basement space permit for the...
That would be, not with us.
And then we could, then we could withdraw, I think that's, I think that's what we agree
is the smartest option?
Damn.
And then no variances associated with the property.
No.
So, makes our life easier.
Yeah, and you guys agree?
Makes your life easier.
Add a couple doors and we're, we're good?
Yep, okay.
Your clients are agreeable?
Yes.
All right?
So, they withdraw?
Withdraw.
Through their application. Great.
Okay.
Thank you, have a good night.
That's good, cause we didn't do regional impact.
Yes, ADUs aren't regional impact.
Only the ones that are on the town lines.
In other towns... In other towns.
Do we have any other business that we have to do?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Oh, Bruce.
Actually, we have two.
Oh, me?
I would think, I would like, I would like too, if you are agreeable, and, you know, we'll, we'll give you your three-month leave of absence for meetings for your cruise.
Cruise is still moving, cruise?
Well, our Alaska trip, whatever.
Three-hour tour, whatever.
So, recently, recently retired, about a year.
Congratulations.
Much busier when you're retired than when you're working.
Well, that's good.
My siblings told me that, I didn't believe them, it's true.
Good. You're doing it right.
But it, but in this, but in this case is, you know, the board can appoint its own replacements absent a mem, absent a member, and, you know, I would move to appoint you as the fifth regular member of the board, filling the vacancy that was left by Judy Elaine's...
I'll second.
...sudden resignation today, seconded by Denise. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Shortest, shortest term as an alternate in history.
And that's an elected term that expires this March?
No. Dream on, better not.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna refresh to 27.
We need, we need to check.
So, every time, me too.
Is he, is he filling, is he going to be filling the remaining, because Judy Elaine was going to be on the ballot in March.
Yes.
So, he'd be filling the remainder of that term.
So, he does have to apply.
So, you gotta run.
Start the tall paperwork.
Yeah.
I have to, you do, who else is running?
That's by the end of this...
You, you, you two and Bruce.
This Friday or next Friday, soon.
Better not be this Friday, I just got in the mail.
I think it's the 22nd through the end of the month, I think, filing, or something like that. But if you check with Kathy Ball's...
We gotta make sure we all do it.
It will work, but, you know, just fill it out, fill it out, and you're on the ballot.
My goal is to get a full board, three alternates.
Well, Bruce, your timing, your timing couldn't have been better, I assure you.
Yeah. So, the other thing I think we have to do is move the February 4 meeting to February 11.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Does that need to be a motion?
I guess it does.
I'll make a motion to move the February 4th to 11th, due to the town deliberative session.
Actually, according to the paperwork that...
It's already done.
It's already been done.
We have to just do it.
You know, I, I hate doing things when they're in arrears.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's like, don't torture us.